Okay, thank you. Good evening, friends and neighbors. Uh, this is a meeting of the, a business meeting of the state and city council. The date is the nineteenth of April in 2021. I'm calling the meeting to order. Do we have any public comment this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we do have public comment from Steve Poison. I'll have Steve come on here. Here he comes. And, um, Steve, go ahead and state your name and address for the record, and I'll start the timer after you do that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. My name is Steve Poison. I am here as president to revi- revitalize downtown Staton, and my address is seventeen fifty East Pine Street in Staton. Um, I was here to talk with you about a month ago about the sidewalk art project that RDS has been planning. And at that time, you decided to form an art commission to review that before it came before you. Um, my understanding is there is so far one person that has been appointed to that commission, one of five. Um, I'm also aware that your next meeting will not be a council meeting because it will be a budget meeting. Um, so the next time you will meet, uh, under my calculation is May seventeenth, which is about a month from now. Um, and I have a concern that waiting for this commission, even if it were to, if it were to fill in the next month and they can review our project and bring a recommendation to you on the seventeenth, that would be great. Um, but I would ask that regardless of whether that commission happens, uh, that you put it on your agenda for the seventeenth to make a decision. I included a timeline, um, in your packet that shows you that we've been working on this project for over a year now. Um, it has been reviewed by twenty merchants, twenty building owners, plus the RDS staff and a few other odd people. Um, it is a very simple, these are one foot tall cartoonish kind of characters that will be painted on the sidewalk in twenty different locations in the downtown. They're meant to be family friendly for things like, um, scavenger hunts, that kind of thing, whimsical for people to happen upon as they're walking downtown. Um, I think it's a worthwhile project, and I don't think there should be any controversy about any of it. The packet has been submitted to staff, um, so they have that information that they can forward to you um, when it's time for you to review all of the art and all of the permissions and the sort of background of where the project originated. Um, so that's why I'm here, is to just ask you to please place it on your agenda for May seventeenth council meeting when, um, you would consider our proposal. Any questions? I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I appreciate your time.
Okay. Uh, are there any questions for Steve at this, at this, at this time? Okay, uh, we'll see, we'll see what we can make happen there for the seventeenth. That, uh, I have a small concern, Steve, that I, I haven't received very many applications for that arts commission, uh, maybe only two or three, if that many. And, um, I think the council's approved a couple of them. But, um, uh, I need to, need to get that going if we're gonna, if we're gonna have one. So, uh, but thank you for this evening, and, and we'll, uh, we'll do this again. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Oh, there's Ben. Did you have a question, Ben, or?
No, I was just, I was just thinking, Steve, I, I'm, this, just as a comment, I was, this was kind of my main concern when we formed this commission is, is finding people to fill the spots.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That was a, definitely a good idea, and if we could fill the spots, we could definitely get some interesting things placed around town. But, um, finding people, especially when not everybody is still out and about, you know, as they normally would be, um, you know, pandemic wasn't here, then that'd be kind of tough. But I, I think I agree with Steve's concern that we should, if, if we can't get those seats filled, we should make a decision on his request regardless.
All right, thank you. Um, anyone else there? I see Counselor Hook. Okay, is there, are there any other questions? If not, back to Alyssa.
That was it for us, um, for public comment this evening.
Uh, let me mention at this time, uh, been a change in the agenda. I hope everyone saw this late, was it late this afternoon? Four fifty-nine PM, that's early lead, uh, as far as business. Uh, we changed the agenda to do that resolution ten twenty, uh, the adjustment in the fiscal budget before we do, uh, the general business of, uh, Republic Services presentation. So, uh, but we need to do consent agenda first. So, uh, would someone like to, um, get us started on that, please?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty. Like to offer a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second, Counselor Mullen, seconds.
All right, thank you. Uh, would you, Alyssa, would you poll the council on that, please?
Yeah. Yeah, definitely. Um, Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
And Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes four to zero.
Okay, thank you. Uh, as people have checked in, uh, through this, as we got started this evening, uh, did Counselor Ort, uh, did she show up?
No, she has not arrived yet, but I will keep my eye out if she.
All right, that's fine. So we keep track of who's here. Okay, so let's, uh, let's see, there's no, no public hearings tonight. Um, let's go to that resolution ten twenty, adopting an adjustment in the fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one budget and a staff report. Susanna?
Good evening, um, Mayor and Council. Um, it's a very short. So when I spoke with the Budget Committee, we talked about why we were volunteering to cut back on our expenditures, um, to make it to the end of the fiscal year. We're still doing that. But because of the timing of, that's almost time to the new budget, the only thing that I'm bringing before council are really the couple items that have the risk of us being overspent according to our spending authority, and then one adjustment from the audit where I had some stuff in the wrong line. So that's why this is the only thing coming. So your staff report talks about, um, the things that were moved around, but I'm gonna show you, so we can kind of talk through this real quick. So, in the general fund, the court position after really evaluating over this last year and looking, it really needs to be a full-time position. And so we had to make adjustments to the expenditures to allot for that, and that's what that twenty thousand is for, is putting that person, that person's been doing it, I just needed to get the spend, the expenses adjusted. So that's what that twenty thousand is for.
Okay.
Um, so, so there's no real change, we just moved funds. And then in your staff report, you saw that because our apportionments are grand totals, that I just let you know that in the community center, I took the eight thousand dollars from materials and services and moved it to capital outlay, it, because we had replaced the HVAC system. That doesn't change the amount that we're spending, it doesn't change our authority, but it does change locations. And as I, we made this adjustment to have one line for our total apportionments, that I will let you know if anything moved in within the category. So that was a categorical move, and you saw that in your staff report. Um, the other adjustment is in parks. The ice storm, um, has caused an increase in expenditures, so we needed to increase, um, expenses by fifty-eight hundred and reduce our contingencies to help cover additional costs in the, um, in the, um, parks. And we will be using some of the mid, the staff because we didn't fill in the temporary positions and that stuff to help cover the additional. It's really more than five, but I only need to ex, ex, expand, enlarge it by the fifty-eight hundred. Um, any questions on those two? Okay. And then the, when I did the apportionment in the beginning of the year, I had the reserve for debt services up here in our spending authority. It doesn't belong there, it belongs in the bottom of, with the totals of from the citywide, what's not being spent. So I need to remove that off of this, uh, total and bring that down below. And that's the, um, that's the only changes that affects the budget numbers, um, for what you're approving this evening, is those three things. And then I do believe there was one other, HVAC, Public Works Administration. Um, we also did an adjustment in Public Works, um, just moving from the reduction in salaries, bringing it down to materials and services, um, as well. Nothing changed in our expenditures, but we just moved categories so that you know that. And we brought an additional seven thousand from personnel down to materials and services to go with that fifty-eight hundred to, um, cover the expenses. And that is really all this is doing, it's just the bare minimum. We're still working with the stuff that we talked about at council, uh, the Budget Committee. Um, so that's what I have. Do you have any questions? My suggestion is you please approve this, so we're staying compliant.
Any questions? Well, let's, uh, the adjustment will cover the cost of the additional cost, correct audit findings, move expenses between categories. Staff recommends approval of resolution ten twenty as presented. Could we get some action on this, or are there questions for Susanna? Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Counselor Patty.
Yeah.
There's no questions for Susanna because she's done such an excellent job at this report and answered all of them before we had them. I will go ahead and move that we approve resolution number ten twenty as presented.
Counselor Hook, seconds.
Thank you, Counselor Hook, a second. Uh, Counselor Patty, a motion to approve the resolution ten twenty as presented. Uh, is there discussion? Anything? Uh, Alyssa, then, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Uh, our, our general, first item of general business that we moved around is Republic Services, City of Staton twenty twenty annual report. And they've got a presentation this evening, so Alyssa, would you like to introduce them or, um, put them on, have them introduce themselves and go ahead with their presentation?
Yeah, um, we've got KJ and William from Republic Services, and KJ has got, got a presentation for you guys, and so I will hand it over to her.
Okay, thank you.
Can I share my screen now?
Yes.
Okay.
You should be able to.
Why is it always so hard to find the actual presentation? Can you see this? Can you see, uh, um, City of Staton?
Not, not yet, we can't.
Okay.
So you'd say, a great seal.
Just give me a second, I didn't open it. So sorry. Did have this problem last week, too, with, um, Zoom. Are you unable to see it still?
Yeah, we still can't see it.
Okay. Um, are, is Will able to share if he? Oh.
There you go.
There we go. You don't need to look at my, uh, Seattle Times subscription offer.
People access.
Okay, I'm gonna make this into a... Okay, are we good now?
Yes, I think so.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Good evening, it's really nice to see all of you and to meet some of you for the very first time, although I have spoken on the phone with, with some of you. Um, the last time Republic Services appeared before council was in twenty sixteen for a rate adjustment when the cost at the burner went up significantly. And although we will be presenting, uh, for a rate adjustment again tonight, it's my intention to not let so much time go by, um, and instead come annually to provide you with an, a report, an update, and kind of a check-in because really a lot has changed in our industry since twenty sixteen, and I'd like to provide legislative reports to you and just keep you updated on what the conversation is nationally, statewide, and, and locally. So, um, first, I'm gonna just provide you with an overview with what has been, hopefully, an anomalous year. And this is an overview of COVID's impact on the industry and sort of a national zoom out on recycling markets. Now, you might remember that in twenty eighteen, it was all over the news, actually. Um, the recycling market crashed essentially, essentially because China decided to not keep taking the world's recycling. And, um, they, I have a whole nother presentation I can give on the history of that and the impacts of that, but the long and short of it is, um, we, we and many other countries were sending contaminated material to China, and they, um, decided that they didn't, didn't want to receive it anymore. So the market had to recover and find different, um, different outlets for all of the materials that were being sent and shifted from country to country. And it's still, um, I wish I could tell you right now that recycling markets have totally stabilized globally, but since twenty eighteen, that's not the case. That policy, China's policy, was called national sword. And we consider it a permanent structural market change. And then, of course, the pandemic place, along with everybody else in every other industry, has placed additional pressure on our industry. Okay, this slide just provides an up, an overview of legislative bills that, that I'm tracking, that we're tracking. The two that I want you to really know about and, you know, that are sort of top of, top of mind are Senate Bill five eighty-one and five eighty-two. And five eighty-one, I, um, I was surprised because I thought it would actually, as you can see, I thought it would die in, in session. Um, but it did squeak through to Ways and Means Committee, and now, um, with a dash one amendment. This bill is what we were, was referred to as a truth in labeling bill for, um, plastics. So, uh, what it was really asking is for the industry producers, the plastics producers, to have, um, more clarity around what would be able to be recycled in Oregon so that consumers could make informed choices. And, you know, right now, when people see just the little chasing arrows with a number inside, I think the natural instinct is you think that, well, that's certainly recyclable, and that's not necessarily the case um, because different resins are recyclable in different areas of the country, and it, it's not a universal code, really. So, um, this truth in labeling sought to put pressure on the plastics industry to feel, you know, more truthful in their labeling. But with the dash one amendment, what has happened is, um, kind of backed off a little bit, and the dash one amendment creates a task force who will then be making recommendations to the Senate Energy and Environment Committee around, um, just making recommendations about what, what might be done, but they won't be doing that for two years. So it'll be a longer conversation that I'd like to keep you informed about. Senate Bill five eighty-two is the really big one. Um, that would essentially overhaul the state's recycling system as, as a reaction to, uh, national sword and as a reaction to just the changing markets. So what this bill would do is create a standardized list as to what is accepted in the state of Oregon to be recycled, specifically looking at plastics. Um, it would also introduce something that's called extended producer responsibility, which again would put more responsibility on the producers uh, to make sure what they use as packaging material has an end market. Um, as you might imagine, there is some opposition to this bill. Uh, so we'll see. Um, but it is the result of a two-year, very extensive and deep conversation between DEQ haulers, producers, processors, and local government. So there was a, there was a big steering committee that was putting this legislation together, and now it's, uh, sitting in Ways and Means, and I'm sure you'll hear about it in the news. But stay tuned, and I will keep your staff informed about, um, about any, any sort of bills that might affect your, your market. Um, the thing about this bill is it doesn't necessarily impact hauling as much as it might impact consumer cost. So we'll see, and, um, like I said, I'll keep you, keep you informed. Um, I'd like to talk about our local responses to what has been, you know, quite an incredible year. Um, when COVID hit, uh, our response was immediate and swift as an essential service. So all non-essential workers were sent to work from home with the equipment they needed, including our customer service representatives. Like everyone, we, um, really upped our cleaning procedures. We staggered start times so that people weren't all, the frontline workers weren't all launching at the same time in the morning. And we added ten PTO days for anyone who fell ill with COVID or had to take care of a family member who fell ill. But one thing we did that was unique in the industry, and I, I think is pretty cool, honestly, is, um, we provided meals twice a week to our frontline workers at, like, right at the beginning. So one of those meals was either breakfast or lunch, and the second meal was a dinner that they could take home to their family. And, um, if you remember, a year ago, there was so much uncertainty and especially with the lockdowns and, um, restaurants not being open anymore, it was, it was a real, um, boost to a lot of our, our local restaurants. Um, we also gave gift cards to our frontline workers, a hundred dollars every other week for two months, and we made it sort of a contest, contest-like thing where they had to take selfies of themselves in front of local businesses that they were supporting. And, um, it's, it's just a way, I'd like to remind you that, you know, small businesses are our customers, too, and we really wanted to support them and do that while we were boosting morale with our frontline workers during that really, really uncertain time. And then, um, of course, there were the wildfires, which I know you know quite a bit about. Um, our, we had fifty-seven employees displaced. Uh, so we provided, again, gift cards to help with unexpected expenses. We provided lodging and meals and, um, procured additional PPE for crews working through that situation to continue to, to provide the curbside service. And, and then, more recently, uh, with the ice storm at the peak, we had a hundred and nine coworkers without power. We, again, provided meals, assistance, and, uh, housing when needed, and we provided generators for some. Um, it's just a way, uh, to let you know that we take care of our people so that they can take care of your community and be there for you, providing the curbside service that you rely on even in, in times of great, um, great stress and states of emergency. Uh, just to note that Staton's home to three of our best drivers, and two of them have been with us for more than twenty years, and, and, um, the third is almost five years. Just some fun facts for you. We have eleven drivers servicing your city, and, um, we, uh, hauled, oh, you know, almost four thousand residential tons from Staton last year. And, uh, it's a lot of, a lot of lifts at the curb every year, you know, almost three hundred thousand. This is an overview of our customer service, um, in twenty twenty. So these are calls into our customer service center, um, and some compliments. You can see we only had five residential complaints in twenty twenty, and I'll show you this next slide. Um, we have two call centers within the state of Oregon, one in Woodburne and one in Corvallis, and we've really hired up. So we now have seventeen customer service representatives that are, that are local-based. Call times are really short, and the last report I read, um, sixty percent of our calls that originate in Oregon are answered in Oregon by people who, uh, live in your community. And now I'm going to hand it over to my colleague, Will Mathias. He's our finance manager, and he's going to talk about financials, and then I'll come back at the end with some, some closing materials.
Thank you, KJ. Good evening, Mayor and Council, thank you for having us. Um, we're here tonight requesting a ten point three percent rate adjustment, which I, I know is, is pretty, a pretty big adjustment, but, uh, appreciate you giving us the opportunity to just kind of explain where we're at and, uh, talk about that adjustment. Uh, as KJ mentioned, the last time we were in for a rate adjustment was twenty sixteen. And at that time, the, the burner rate had increased somewhere around thirty percent, and our disposal portion of our cost structure is about thirty-five percent of our cost structure. So that impact to us was about ten point six percent. We received a rate adjustment of twelve percent at that time to cover the burner increase, and then, uh, just inflationary costs that had occurred since our prior increase in twenty twelve, or, uh, sorry, I believe it's twenty twelve. Apologize, yes. Uh, so the, uh, that increase was in twenty thirteen, excuse me. So, uh, in, in the time, uh, in the last ten years, uh, we've had those two rate adjustments. And if you back out the burner increase portion of all of that, the rate adjustments to cover inflationary costs are six point eight percent, or about, uh, point seven percent, less than one percent per year. And, um, our, our inflationary costs have, um, have risen even since that twenty sixteen date, um, primarily related to the recycle costs that KJ had mentioned. And so we'll talk about that a little bit more in the presentation. This slide that is showing, in the light blue line, it shows our profitability in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, uh, and then in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two based on getting a ten point three percent rate adjustment. Uh, the other lines there, the red dotted lines represent eight percent and twelve percent, um, margin, which is what is the generally accepted profit range for, uh, our business, our industry in, in this area, um, in, in most of the jurisdictions that are in Marion County and, uh, around Oregon. The dark blue line represents ten percent, the midpoint of that. So you can see the rate adjustment we're asking for would realign us to ten percent by the end of twenty twenty-two. Uh, go ahead and move forward in the slide, please, KJ. All right. So, um, here you can see just, uh, summary in, income statement, and, uh, our profit level in twenty nineteen was six percent. We actually improved without a rate adjustment in twenty twenty at eight point eight percent. And there are a couple of factors to that. I'll discuss that more in the next slide. But, um, but some COVID-related factors and, uh, and, and recycle-related factors. So I'll discuss that momentarily. But you can see without a rate adjustment that our profitability would actually, based on our forecast, dip to five point nine and four point eight percent respectively in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Go ahead and move forward a slide, please, KJ. So here, on our expenses, there's a lot of moving parts here. Um, and, but the main, the main thing to kind of take note of is, uh, disposal and recycling costs. So recycling costs have, have actually increased quite a bit, and you can't really see it here on this, uh, chart, but that's simply because it doesn't go back beyond twenty nineteen. But since twenty sixteen, when we were in, um, State and last to request a rate adjustment, our recycling costs through twenty nineteen had increased forty-four percent. And while they, they stabilized a little bit in twenty twenty, and you can see the impact of disposal and recycling cost softening a little bit, um, they had, they, that cost structure, uh, it feels pretty permanent at this point going forward. And so we don't expect to see any more, um, decreases in recycling. We feel like it's pretty well-stabilized. Uh, what is also in that disposal and recycling line is just some lower container weights and, uh, industrial box weights. box weights last year that we, we saw. And we do expect those weights to go back up with more activity in 2021. Go ahead and move forward, please, KJ. So here on this, the pie chart, it just breaks down where a payment for a 35-gallon customer goes. Most of the residential customers in the city of Stateon are, they use a 35-gallon trash cart. And so you can see the breakdown here. The main piece of that is in green and that's disposal and recycling, which is just over 35% of our, of that, where that total payment would go to. And, and that's also a section that we have very, very little control over because the disposal rate on trash is set by the county at the burner. And then recycling is determined by recycle markets, the end markets and the processor, what the processor charges us. And so while we really don't have a lot of control over it, it drives a pretty significant amount of our, our business here. Go ahead and flip it forward one side. This, this shows in many ways, the same thing the last slide showed, but it, it ranks all these costs kind of in the order. And you can see disposal and recycling at the very top, followed by labor and then some SG&A expense. And then the portion which we, which actually is essentially our profit, $2.42, although I'll note that after net income, we have to have reserves for daily operating activities. So that is actually, that's not the true profit to shareholders. It would actually be a little less than that. And, you know, I, I don't know about you, but for me, my water and sewer bill run about $200, my cable and internet, 150, phone, 50, gas, 100, and electric, 150. And so the garbage bill at roughly, you know, in the neighborhood of $30, where we send a truck by each residence house, two trucks each week by each residence house, those trucks are $350,000. And, you know, I, I just think it's a tremendous value personally for, for the garbage bill because it's by far the, the lowest of all of those for me. Move it forward, please, KJ. So the, these would be the, the current rates and the proposed rates with the rate adjustment. And again, I, I know it's a large ask that we're making and but I just wanted to give you some data points to compare to. So another nearby city is, is Silverton. And back in the beginning, beginning of January, we had a rate adjustment in that city. And so I'll just take your, your 35-gallon cart customer. Most of, again, most of your residents are in a 35-gallon. The Stateon rate that we're proposing is $30.22. Silverton's rate went to 3201. On the commercial side, the, the most common container size for your city is a three-yarder. And that rate is proposed to be 27068. Now Silverton's is a, a little lower than that. About 5% lower. But then there's a big difference in industrial boxes too. And the average size industrial box in the city of Stateon is a 30-yarder. That rate we're proposing to be 18729. And Silverton is 18% higher than that. So there are, there are some, you know, differences if you go into each one of those, but just as a good rate comparison, I just wanted to share that because that's another nearby city that is similarly sized. And so what we're asking for is, is in line with that. KJ, if you'd flip it forward one more. I'll just leave you with one last data point here to consider. And this is the, in the blue line, it's the cumulative rate adjustments that we have received in the city of Stateon over the last 10 years. And that includes the one we're proposing tonight. So over 10 years, that rate adjustment would go, that, that's 26.7% over the last 10 years, again, with the one we're proposing tonight. And then the water, sewer, trash index is represented in the red line. The reason I chose, we chose the water, sewer, trash index is it's the inflationary index that most closely follows our business. And you can see over 10 years, that is at 38.2%. So just another data point for comparison to consider. We appreciate your time. I will turn it back over to KJ to finish out her presentation. Thank you.
And when Will is saying the water, sewer, trash index, he means it's a consumer price index. Moving on, I just want to draw your attention. These are our 2030 sustainability goals. And I want to draw your attention to our climate, our deep commitment to climate leadership. We're known as an industry leader and we're very proud of it. And I also wanted to draw your attention to the charitable giving line. There's two different streams in our charitable giving. There's sponsorship and, you know, sort of event support at the local level. In fact, we just received a request from the Saniam Youth Sports League that we are supporting. And that comes from our, our Woodburn office. But we also have a national charitable foundation that is pretty new. And in fact, it's new since 2016, since the last time we were able to present in front of this council. So the National Charitable Foundation really focuses on community revitalization grants and works closely with partners like Habitat for Humanity and neighborhood partnerships and looks at, you know, there's an RFP process and looks at large, larger projects that are about neighborhood improvement. So it could be anything from like storefront improvements, you know, Main Street spruce ups, affordable housing through Habitat. We do community gardens. I know that Stateon has a community garden and we're currently funding through the charitable foundation, a, a pretty large rehab of a large community garden in, in North Portland with the charitable foundation monies. They got a, a very large grant. So I just want to encourage you, if you have a project in mind or a idea or a notion even, I would, please reach out to me or your new operations manager, Josh Harvey, who I hope to introduce you all to soon, and about those projects. And, you know, it's always worth having a conversation. This last slide just shows you some of the awards and honors that we've received in 2020, including the world's most ethical companies, best employers for women, and 100 best corporate citizens. And in summary, I just want to thank you all for being such, it's such a pleasure to be a partner with the city of State and thank you so much. And tonight, we're, we're really just asking for two things. One is for council to direct staff to bring a resolution at the next meeting for a rate adjustment of 10.3% as well mentioned. And the second is for council to direct staff to put us on the agenda annually because I would love to update you every year more regularly about what's happening at the state level, at the national level and at the local level. Thank you very much. And we're ready for questions. I will.
Thank you. Questions for the Republic folks? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. KJ, I just had a few points of clarification. This evening was pretty helpful with the graphs. Is there a reason you guys present the information for profitability from prior years, 2019? Like 2016, 2017, 2018, since the last rate adjustment?
I'm gonna let Will.
Oh, thank you.
Other than just not crowding up the slide too much, we, we definitely have, have that information. But, and, and you can see in there that there's a pretty consistent trend, but no, no particular reason other than just to not crowd up the slide.
Okay. And then the other question I had, and I feel humor me some more here. So the acceptable profitability window is from 8 to 12%. And then you stated in 2020, it was 8.8% for your company. Do I have that right?
That's correct.
Okay. I will add to your customer, just shout outs. My son comes out and watches for you every Wednesday at 6:00 AM. It's like a parade at our house. We kind of just figure that's when we're waking up on Wednesdays. And the other day, he was nice enough to leave my son a little garbage can and he really appreciated that. So if you could pass that on to whatever employee services us, we really appreciate it. The other thing I, I just, the other thing I just want to set the record straight. You guys have a 90-gallon can limit or something on yard debris bins, correct?
We have, yeah, 90, 90-gallon can, I believe. So Josh Harvey is our ops manager. So I'll, I'll double check with him here real quick, but 90 gallon, gallon, it sounds correct, yes.
For yard debris?
For yard debris.
Okay. So just to be clear, that's not set by us. That's set by you guys, correct? Limits for that kind of thing?
So li- limits on the can size, I believe that is the, the city's just policy setting direction, but let me, let me confirm. I want to get you a good answer and I want to make sure I hear from our, our ops manager.
I, while Will tries to connect with Josh here, I would like to ask you, Counselor Patty, how old your son is?
He is three.
Oh, that's awesome. You, I'm really excited to tell you this. We often do birthday parades for kids with the different trucks. So if you, we do it all the time in different cities. And so if your son really, if that would be a nice surprise for him, please let us know because we, it makes the driver so happy to, to, you know, come out and sort of show their stuff and deliver surprises.
Well, now you, you got everybody in Stateon just gonna call you for that because they all just heard our conversation.
Where do they, where do they call? Just the people that are watching, where do they call? What do they do?
Dispatch line here.
Well, you can work with me or Josh, and Josh Harvey, who just started as your new operations manager. And so I did send an email to Keith and to the mayor this afternoon, looking for time to introduce them. So you can get to know him and, you know, and I know Counselor Patty, you have my phone number also.
It's a do. Thank you, KJ.
Yeah, pleasure.
Okay. So Counselor Patty, it sounds like in our agreement with Stateon, and I apologize, we didn't have this answer for you right away, but it's a 65-gallon container. And, and so that, that's the, that's the size that's set there in, in the city of Stateon, based on our agreement.
Okay. And that's by our agreement. Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions? Well, let me mention the driver who gets all kinds of of kudos from us, but he stops every Wednesday morning and gets out of the truck and gives Gus the golden doodle, gives him a biscuit, pats him on the head. And gets back in the truck and off he goes. He's been doing this for as long as he's been driving. And the dog goes out at 7:30 in the morning to see his friend. It's, it's impressive and, and and we've thanked that driver for a long time and, and continue to do so. It's a great service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Our, our drivers are pretty fantastic. Thank you for that. We'll, we'll let them know that he said so.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So just out of curiosity, for people that have been hit are during this economic, during this, during these economic issues, do you guys offer some kind of like financial program for people that might not be able to pay for a couple of months? What's that program look like?
Well, each case, you know, each case is, each individual's situation is different. So if anybody is experiencing financial hardship, we just encourage them to call and, you know, we'll, we'll work with them and, and tailor it to their particular situation. It happens all the time. And I understand it's, this has been a very trying year for everyone.
Well, here's, here's one last one for me. Those, they look expensive, those trucks. What's the service life on one of them? I mean, all the hydraulic equipment on them. And what, 5% of the operating of the money goes to maintaining and, and keeping those. What's the service life on one of them, please?
They have a seven to eight-year useful life and they are, you're right, they're very expensive. They're $350,000 on average. If you're talking about residential or commercial trucks. So, yes, sir.
Wow. Okay. Thank you. Other questions or thoughts for these folks?
Just one, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor McDonald, go ahead.
Speaking of vehicles, as someone who's interested in, in raise all the time about electric vehicles, cars, trucks and all that kind of things. I know that some industrial vehicles are getting electrified as well as, as Republic Services are looking at electrifying their fleet as far as that. And, you know, that'll, that's a big help to emissions if you're looking at sustainability and that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. We, our company has been very active and, and looking at electrifying the fleet. And that's something that we should see coming in the near future for our company.
Yeah, you're right, Counselor McDonald. The technology is improving so vastly that there are many truck companies that are developing electric garbage trucks and pilot programs around that. I will, well, I don't even think I spoke to you about this yet, but I did speak to PGE this week and there's an added layer of how, of what the system can handle with the charging stations. So it's something, it's going to be a a little bit of a longer conversation. I was really excited when I heard about the trucks that were being developed and I would thought, you know, we gotta get on that right away. And then I was reminded by PGE that there's larger systems at play that need to be taken into account.
Okay.
Sure. Thank you.
Other questions and thoughts? Well, can I say thank you for the council and would appreciate you being here tonight? And let's see, what's the process to to move on your, your suggestions? Alyssa, is, is Keith there handy?
He, he is. Hold on just a second. I, I can probably answer it also. You, when we get down to communications from the mayor and council, you can, one of the counselors can make a move.
All right. Thank you.
I want to thank you all so much. It's so nice to see your faces and I, I look forward to getting to know you all better.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Move back to, move back to the agenda. Under communications from city staff. Anything?
No, we do not have anything this evening, Mayor.
Okay. Communications from mayor and council. Let me ask that, that question again. What's, what's our process here? The staff looks at that recommendation and, and puts it on an agenda. And we move on it. Is that right? That's what we're going for.
Yes.
So have they made a formal presentation to the staff other than this one this evening, as far as a rate increase?
If this, this would be it. The next steps would be to direct staff to draft a resolution. Bring it back to the next council meeting for the rate increase.
So would someone like to do that?
I have a question. Yeah, Counselor Hook, sorry. Alyssa, would that, that, would that come with the normal staff recommendation and, and all of that, the fact finding, things like that?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. Thank you. Perfect, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Council Patty. That was my question as well. Thank you, Council Hook.
I'd entertain a, so I'd entertain a motion if, uh, someone would like to follow up on it, to, uh, direct staff to, um, formalize this request from Republic Services and, uh, bring it to the next council meeting.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think I would follow up on Counselor Hook and then Counselor Patty's question there, which I think, uh, one of the things that might be helpful is to talk about franchise agreements. I don't know if we've spent much time with this, um, council, and maybe specifically talk about the franchise agreement with Republic Service. So you had an understanding of how that all worked and, you know, kind of what that relationship is and how it works between the city and these, uh, franchised, uh, services that we have. So, um, we haven't talked about Republic Services, uh, for a while. So maybe it's time just to, to take a look at that too, just so you, as a council, have a full understanding of kind of what the relationship is, how this works. And, you know, going back to the question Counsel Patty asked about the size limits, that would be part of the franchise agreements. That would probably be negotiated, um, from both parties. So not necessarily something we would have set, it's something that would have been set in that agreement. Um, so there are things that we can ask to be changed as well in that franchise agreement if we want, or other options we have as well, which I don't think we need to get into this evening. But, um, happy to have a, a deeper and richer conversation about the franchise agreements that we have. Work with the city attorney to make sure we can, uh, talk about that as well. So I, I think all of that would be a more full, rich answer, uh, to the question that Counselor Hook asked.
All right, as, as always, you saved our bacon again tonight, Keith. And, uh, so, uh, what kind of, is this just, we're gonna be in the midst of budget hearings. Are you thinking just, uh, as far as maybe some discussion, franchise discussions?
I, I think we could definitely have that conversation on the 17th. Um, as is mentioned, the May 3rd meeting is our first budget hearing, where we present the budget and go over the budget message. The following week, which I believe is May 10th, is, is May 10th, 11th, and 12th. I'm just verifying those days. I should know them off the top of my head. Uh, would be the budget hearing committees, and then the 17th would be the next council meeting. So, uh, we could definitely have a meeting at that time. It'd be hard to have a special call, but if you wanted to do that as well, that's an option, just to throw it out there. But that's kind of what our, kind of, agenda looks like. And would ask a little bit of time too, just to have time to talk with the city attorney, look over the franchise and, and to have kind of a rich conversation.
Okay, fine.
Mr. Mayor, this is Council Patty. I would be in support of that as well, just to kind of understand, uh, what the franchise agreement looks like now. And then also kind of some needs that I've heard about in the community that maybe aren't being met at this point. So I, I thank you for bringing that up, Keith.
Thank you. Yeah, anything else on that? Looks like we have, we're heading in a direction on this. And, uh, moving towards some resolution. And we, we always need to talk about franchise agreements, uh, power, gas. Let's see, what else? Garbage, those are three. Internet service? SCS? Anyway, there are franchise agreements and we probably need to spend a little more time, more often with them. Okay, anything else? Let's see what we've got. Uh, I mentioned it earlier under Mr. Prezant's presentation that have not seen very many applications for that, um, arts council. So, uh, just a reminder to those that are watching or listening, if you're interested in this, uh, get an application and let's, uh, let me hear from you. Okay, counselors? Anything else this evening? Counselor Hook?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to remind the community, um, that ballots will be coming out, I think on the 28th of this month for the May election. And it's really imperative to, um, some of our city services that the two levies that will, are on the ballot pass. Um, it's a continuation of a levy that we have had since about 1998 with a couple of changes to it. There was a lot more in-depth, uh, stakeholder meetings to figure out what was actually needed for funding for parks and recreation, or the recreation stuff, and then, which is the pool and parks, and then also the library. Um, so it's gonna be two levies. Um, we really need you guys to make sure that your neighbors vote and your friends vote, everyone in the community votes for this so that we, um, have a pool that can reopen, uh, once COVID, um, sort of, uh, gets, I guess, better under control and we're allowed to reopen. Um, and so that our libraries can open. And so we can have parks that are being able to be maintained. It's my understanding that, uh, our pool will probably not be able to reopen if the levy doesn't pass, which would be a huge hit to our community and major services for our parks and library will probably be hit as well. So please vote for, uh, in this May election and, uh, remember to get your ballots in early.
Thank you very much. That was good. The voter's pamphlets, pamphlet is out this week. And so, uh, lots of letters to support, uh, lists of community members that are supporting these levies. I thought in reading it, uh, but I kind of read pretty well, I thought it's pretty good explanations of those things. And, um, there, there shouldn't be a lot of confusion. I hope there isn't. So, um, I echo, uh, Counsel Hook's comment there that, boy, urge everyone to vote. Get out and vote. Okay, anything else this evening? Alyssa?
Um, I just, I wanted to, we had go back to the franchise and the rate increase and ask that council make a motion, um, just to, like, Republic had requested to, um, direct staff to come back at that next meeting with the resolution, if that's what you would like us to do.
I, I thought, I thought Keith, um, straightened that out for us, but.
We, we can do it all at the one meeting if that's what the council wants to do. I just didn't want it to get lost, um, if that's what you were wanting us to do.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. Uh, I'm not comfortable bringing forward the rate increase yet. I still want more information about the franchise agreement.
Okay.
And then also staff's recommendations on the rate increase as well. I can make that a motion if you would like.
No, that, okay, that's, we just wanted to make sure we had the direction there. And so that's what we will.
I feel the same. I feel the same with Counsel Patty, um, exactly what he said. I concur, so.
Great, okay. And I saw Counsel McDonald shaking his head, yes, also. So we will, uh, plan for that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Staff has direction. Okay, good. Anything else? I can't think of anything that I need to bring to the council this evening. Hmm, other than what I've already said. Uh, is there anything else one last time? If not, uh, let's conclude this and, and, um, go have a wonderful evening, all right? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Have a nice night.